Evening everyone, I'd like to reconvene the Thursday, March 28th, 2024 meeting in Lake Forest Board of Education. You would please join me with a pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence. I, my wife, my kids, and my parents, and my children, and my children's friends, and my children's parents, and my children's mothers, and my children's mothers. Alright, good evening everyone. Thank you for those who have joined us in person as well as those who have joined online. Do apologize that we're starting a little late. We did have a meeting around a little late before this. Just a reminder that we are streaming tonight's meeting across the internet. And every recording of the meeting as well as meeting minutes will be posted once they are approved. We'll move on to roll call of board members. Dr. Wyatt? Mrs. McCloskey?
Here.
Mrs. Star?
Here.
Vice President Brown?
Here.
President Earl Dempsey serving his chair is here. All five board members are present. Thank you all for being here this evening. Move on to 2.4 approval of the agenda, Mr. Ralph. I make a motion we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, we move to a vote. All those in favor? I. And the opposed? The abstentions. Motion carries five to zero. I have 2.5 approval minutes. I make a motion we approve the meeting minutes for the March 14th meeting.
Second.
Motion floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, we move to a vote. All those in favor? I. The opposed? The abstentions staying. Motion carries four to zero with one abstention. Alright, we're up to 2.6 recognitions and presentations. So this is one of our annual road trips. We are here at WT Chipman this evening. Very happy to be here. Turn it over to Dr. Lucas.
Good evening everybody, and I'd like to introduce Dr. Cooper and her team. I think we've got Mr. Pearson, Mr. Milner, and Coach Romley. And also you got with you today, Dr. Cooper.
We also have our cheerleaders here for this evening.
Great, next slide.
Well, welcome everyone. Welcome to WT Chipman. I cannot be more excited to host tonight's board meeting here in this very building. I actually spent most of my school career here when I was a child. So when I was younger, this was South Elementary, and this was Chipman. So I spent many, many years here, and I have many wonderful memories as a young student in this building. So it's very special for me to come back. It's more than just the building that was special when I came back here last year, because there were a lot of familiar faces that I saw. Dr. Wyatt was one of my business teachers. Mrs. Dufresne was one of my math teachers. And Romley was one of my eighth grade English, my good art teachers. So tonight, I want to take a few minutes to share with you what makes Chipman special to such a lot. So for me, Chipman is unrivaled with the staff that we have here. They care deeply about the students, and they work so hard every day. So what they do is best. It's definitely a wonderful learning environment for our students, even in the midst of a little bit of the middle school craziness. So the first person going to mic up is Ms. Jill Romley. She is a perfect example of one of these people. She works as a true advocate for all students, and she creates kindness and inclusivity every day. She's also our proud cheer group. We'll introduce her a little bit with our cheerleaders. I feel lucky that I get to do work with Ms. Romley every day. I've been managing her every pretty much attention when I was one of her students. Yeah, we work together. So I will turn it over if it's something.
Evening. When doctors were asking to speak this evening, I didn't hesitate to say yes. I've been at Chipman going on 29 years. I started here at 21 years old, and I literally feel like I had grown up in this building. My children certainly do, because from the time they were little, they have run these halls. They could have gone to Milford, but I chose Lake Forest, because I did feel like it was their job choice, and I still feel that way. There's just a sense of family. My kids follow their former teachers, aunt and uncle. They were at weddings, they'd come to baby showers. The staff is just phenomenal. When I think back, there have been so many changes since 1996. IEPs were handwritten. The lockers used to be an ugly burnt orange. Blue and gold were our colors. The teams were named after cats. The sixth grade hall was south. My current office was South Maine office, and we shared the cafeteria with the staff. I really don't know how we did that. I don't know how we got through all those lenses that kind of did it. We didn't have air conditioning. There was no girls soccer volleyball teams. There was no awning in the front. The hallways that connect our gym were here, and there was very few inclusion classrooms. So much has changed, and that's what I really love about Chipman. Changes in anything scare people. But we always stand together and push through, and we manage to get quality staff even when the odds are against us. Even with this pandemic, we had a mess, but we still get through it. We work together, and we make a difference with our kids. And haven't heard about those state champions. On another note, who doesn't want their former student as their boss? I love working here because I physically see what I do every day pays off. I also say that I coach the top Dr. Cooper, Mr. Crawford, and Mr. Haas, who are also ones in my English class. And there's nothing like watching your kids be successful. In closing, I have fun every single day. These kids, the staff, this community make an unbelievable journey, and Chipman does not feel like work. It feels like home. Thank you.
Good evening. I am Mr. Pearson. And the thing that I love most about WT Chipman is our extracurricular and co-curricular activities. So I would like to share a little bit of information about those. We currently have over 200 students playing sports this spring right now at WT Chipman. We have been state champs at volleyball, state champions at cheerleading. And I have run the data for every middle school in the state of Delaware. We have the third highest win percentage of any middle school in the state of Delaware. On top of that, we provide. And we give thanks to our athletic director, our coaches, volunteer, and our parents. On top of that, we have about a dozen co-curricular activities, which include National Junior Honor Society, BPA, Readers as Leaders Chess Club, and so on and so on. In the future, we look to increase participation, increase our offerings based on student interest, as well as trying to find a way to decorate this building with all the great achievements of students in these sports and clubs. So I'm going to take a moment to introduce Ms. Extracurricular herself, Mrs. Madeline Gallo. She is our FBA president. She is the starting forward on our soccer team. She is in National Junior Honor Society, as well as FFA. This is Madeline.
Good evening, Dr. Lucas, members of the board, district administration, and family members. I am Madeline Gallo, and I am the presiding president of the Chipman Student Government Association. I would like to take this opportunity this evening to share with you the many reasons why Chipman is a great school, or for better words, community. Community is defined as a feeling of fellowship with others as a result of sharing common attitudes, interests, and goals. Chipman is where many find their community, one of those we need. The students that currently attend Chipman were in central or still in elementary school when COVID hit. So most didn't get the chance to present themselves and make friends. Students didn't get the chance to express interest in school clubs or formally get to meet their teachers and have a connection with learning. No student got the learning experience that they would today. Here at Chipman though, they now have that chance, the opportunity to be themselves. Chipman enables students to find out what clubs they enjoy and are good at, like FFA, NJHS, SGA, BPA, and many more. They now have the ability to go to buy off with order to eat and enjoy the friend made there. Chipman students can now connect for their futures and build relations in the classroom, which helps with the learn, making it a fun and enjoyable experience. Most importantly, they can create friendships that they thought they might never have, and that could last for the rest of their lives. I know firsthand that coming to Chipman as a sixth grader was definitely nerve wracking and different. It meant a bigger school, different schedules, and more work, but bigger opportunities and more friendships are also waiting on the other side of those last doors. From my three years of experience here, I have made so many friends, some that I hope will last forever. I've learned so much in and out of the classroom, and I've made connections with all the teachers and staff here that make going to school so much easier. Schools are places where kids come and go, and staff work and leave, but Chipman is more than that. Chipman, Chipman works as one and builds each other up. Chipman allows students to express themselves and find their passion and trip. Chipman is a community for men, one of them being, thank you.
So I looked at the agenda tonight and saw that I was following Madeline Gallo. I call her Madeline President, or I call her this. Tell that to follow. So I may not speak for myself and Luke, but I say unfortunately for us, we can't say that we went through Lake Forest. She had a great high school experience, her high school experience we went, but you know, when I hear Dr. Cooper, when I hear Ms. Romley, when I see young Gallo, those who go hallways, just the experience that they get, it's just exciting. I've expressed to you guys, I've expressed to Dr. Lucas, some of the people here, that although I did not go to Lake Forest, you guys have always made me feel like I'm going to Lake Forest. I started my career here, I was a student taught right in this building with Mrs. Timberman as a middle school hopeful teacher. I had my elementary degree, and I was sold. From the moment I walked in here to start to teach, this is the place where I wanted to be. Now, I know I had a little time somewhere else, and usually when you leave, you know, a couple sideways looks. But Mr. Mormon was one of the first ones to say, if you're ready to come back, you know, we'll have you back. And you guys receiving with open arms, then I am very blessed to be back. So what we have for you tonight, who better than to tell you than our own staff and students? How much they like Chipman?
We welcome to Chipman Middle School. This is Chipman Live, a special night broadcast. I am your host, Mr. Hee, joined by the world's greatest co-host. Time on. Did you say evening broadcast? It is the evening broadcast. This is a special meeting they were having that we were actually hosting at Chipman. Yes, this is a special board meeting tonight that we are now creating a great host of. So welcome, Dr. Lucas, esteemed members of school board, various administrators, as well as any community members that are here. Welcome to WT Chipman Middle School for our board meetings tonight.
Yes, welcome. I'm a little nervous right now, you know what I mean? I know we have thousands upon thousands of watchers.
Well, you know, we are, we are the number one public, we're a show that any public school in Delaware, we watch it. The ratings are there. Can we also, you're an opportunity to introduce Chipman in something simple, just to say hello.
It's me.
Well, we're not really adulting it though.
That's thinking there. I got a pretty good idea.
You have a better one? We're, we're not, we can't do it. We're not having any privacy either. We need something, you know, interesting. Something that really showcases the wonderful students and staff here in the building. So what better way than to hear from our staff and students than to hear directly from them?
I love Chipman because I love the sixth grade team that I work with. This is my first year here, and they have me feel like part of their family.
I love Chipman because they have pretty good classes, so it's a little easy and very fun.
Because Chipman has the best students in the world.
Because the teachers are so supportive and nice to me.
I love Chipman. We have good coaches for our team.
We love running our special Olympic program.
We love to see them grow.
I came here in seventh grade, graduated from Lake Forest, and this is open up for Lake Forest School District. I turned on it back in 2007 and haven't been anywhere since.
It's just such an amazing job for what this admin does here at this school.
Everything about Chipman is awesome. We get free programs, we get dominant things. It's awesome. Thanks for I made a bunch of friends.
I really love this district here, the district I grew up in, came through, and graduated from Lake Forest. I wanted to give back to the community that served me so well.
One of the new things is my family went through here. So my dad actually went here when it was parent and high school. My sisters went through here. I went through here. My kids will be here eventually, and that's really nice to see, right? So all of us, we're psyched with feeling.
Is how community based we are. Like Honor Society in May, we're actually sending out 100 kids from the school across the Harrington community to do all kinds of service projects. And I feel that the teachers and the administration have taught the kids that we have potential in life.
Teachers, principals, the food, the weather, the atmosphere, everything's great.
It's a smaller school district, and it's got that like small town feel to it.
I love Chipman just for the fact of the staff, the attitude here, the culture is amazing.
It's because they include me in everything. They never leave me out.
I cannot imagine working anywhere else, but that'd be usually the most good.
I love being able to connect back with the community that raised me.
Well, I am a veteran of Lake Forest School District. I love my Chipman kids. I love my job because we are sparked and we represent every single day.
Sports and academics are insane. It's kind of underrated, but I love Chipman.
I love my students. I love coming down and seeing all of our staff smiling faces and just being able to come and help our students. I'm really grateful. I want them to be the, you know, a great parents and a great students.
And the staff, particularly in my big family, this is where I went to school at, and I love all the staff here.
Hey, it's a good school. Very good school. Very good before he talked.
Love the students. I love the excitement, and I love the way they work, work all that they possibly can. I like working at Chipman because I work with my friends, and every day is a new day and experience with kids.
They have a very good school, and they have great teachers here, including my parent on this party.
We have great students.
Because of the cool academic teachers.
You like to pick one.
They have three state championships.
I love Chipman because middle school kids are fun, and every day is a new adventure. But of course, this three-time state champion cheer team, I can confirm, that is the best part of Chipman.
I love Chipman because we have a meeting, sorry, and the BTA club is just so literally phenomenal.
It does sound cliche, but I really, really like my attitude. So I think you are, they still, they give a good, they enjoy your work, it's so good.
I think the workers, I think you'll have on a daily basis.
Because one, I'm a Lake Forest graduate, so I like getting back to anything I was in. Everybody here is, it was like family.
Everybody says this is inside.
I want to thank you again for being here tonight, that we get the opportunity to host. One of the things we have is an amazing FFA program. So we have some floral items that were put together for Dr. Lucas to support tonight that we want to present to you. And at the end tonight, we start every day at Chipman with the same slogan, so we wanted to start working off tonight with the same thing. So if you're a Chipman staff member or a student, you can help me out and get started and say, be kind, stand up for our attention, Chipman proud. So next, I want to turn it over to Mrs. Jill Romley, actually Coach Romley, that has been joining me. Our state, our cheerleaders this year were state champions, which is really amazing. This is actually the third year in a row that Chipman has had state champs for our cheerleaders. So I want to thank Coach Romley and Coach Grace who put them here tonight for everything they do for our cheerleaders. I'm not going to say anything late about that.
Good, Grace, I'm sorry. She is learning how to put IDs this season, so she, I guess, has a funny role. I'm pleased to introduce our three-time state champion cheer team. These girls have had an unbelievable season. Again, they support within the high school ranges and consistently beat every middle school by final points. They won specialty awards in every competition for best dance, or best jumps, or best stunts. And you see compliments from college-level coaches who are now following our Instagram page, just thinking what the girls are doing. They've definitely made a name for themselves. This year, Coach Grace was also nominated for Coach of the Year, and although she did not win, she still has plenty of coaching left in her. She has also made a name for herself. We actually had some schools in Newcastle County inquire and ask her that they were going to pay her to put their routines together. But we're not going to let her do that because she worked for us. So with that being said, this season was rough, just because we experienced flu, COVID, injuries. It was just one thing after the next. There was one competition, we didn't even have enough girls put on the mat. So they overcame all that. Each week still coming out on top. They've just done an amazing job. And to think, the breakdown these kids, there's 14 sixth graders, 12 seventh graders, and five eighth graders. So we have plenty left in us as we continue through. They're just a great group of kids. Alright, so let me get them up here. Riley Banks? Armani Vayner is not here. She's also a member of our team. Taylor Boyer? Hello? Gabrielle Ross? Brooklyn Eastman? Helen Lee Weaver? Carrie Walker? The Blackfield Sock? Aubrey Halls? Isabel Bykona? Kendy Jenkins? Elena Rebel? Diane Leonard? Taylor Warren? Carmella Sears? Alex Steve? Lenny Morley? And Jada?
I'm sure.
So.
Welcome, Roseanne. Parents, if you're parents, if you're parents, and if you're married, that is a must.
So first, just to say congratulations, ladies, look forward to all the good things you're going to do with Lake next year and beyond. So good work. Thanks. And then I'd just like to say thank you to our Chipman administration team, Dr. Cooper, Mr. Pearson, Mr. Miller. We appreciate you being here, hosting us, and everything that you do day in and day out, you and your staff. Just as a parent would never admit who their favorite child is, I would never admit what my favorite school is. But what I will say is that this is also my favorite building, because for me, it was the same. I would, the meeting, we were, the room we're in for a meeting was actually where I went to second grade with Mrs. Patterson, right? And I will say, however, some of you heard this before, but the one thing I do not like about this building is that staircase right there. Because that's the staircase I tripped up for my eighth grade graduation. One of those things you never forget, right? So, but thank you all very much for anybody else. Thank you. Appreciate it. This is the part of the evening that those of you who were here for the presentation, feel free to escape. We will pause just a moment. You are more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but you won't hurt our feelings. Alright, that'd be great. Always a fun time in the evening to do, definitely enjoying these very, these very trips. We're, we're on to section 2.7, citizens' participation. Beginning of each meeting, we do offer the opportunity for members of the public to address the board. For those who are here in person, we would ask you to sign in upfront and present your sheets to the superintendent's office. Do not believe we have anyone signed up this evening, so we will close public comment, and it will reopen again prior to our next meeting. We're up to section three reports. We'll start with 3.1, student council report from the high school. We have Lamaja Johnson. Welcome, Johnson.
Good evening. Today, I'm presenting the student council board meeting. To begin, Miss Savage's physical science class has a guest speaker who's coming in to do solar panels. And in May, he will be doing a butter making activity. For Savage as well, the class will be doing an activity on the practice of using insects as a food source. And in May, they will do a squid infection. For Mrs. Holmes' science class, Brad Hart, who are the four HSM, will be in our biology classroom on the 27th of March to do a dissection in her class, as well as Mrs. Rom. Students will be in groups and will perform a dissection on either squid or bridge. Additionally, our honor biology students will be going to Hill's pond on Thursday to obtain samples of the pond water to then view under the rocks. For Mrs. Boats' French class, they're, she's taking her French students to France during spring break, and they begin part tomorrow. And Mr. Yonshack's in this class, they had six students in the past 10 days have more, and they have more scheduled than the end of April, every week, to the end of May. And Mr. Moore, Josh Fidel, or Brad in the class. He has six juniors from the JTD program in the process of completing their first paid internship. This is the first active internship in years at Lake Forest High School. And Mrs. Post's culinary class, they have catered for the Ouija at Wellington University on March 13th, 2024. Four students are going to the M R E Child Challenge at Dover Pooping on Friday, the 27th. And they are, they have prepared appetizers for the F M A banquet. Six pro students will be attending the Junior Achievement Shadow at the Hilton in Dover on the 28th of March. And the Ella Caffino students will compete at the Junior Achievement of Delaware Park, Kuna Pole, at Best and Hecklers in Wilmington on April 11th. They're in the process of creating an annual award annually. On April 11th, they will present in front of business professionals from throughout the state and the annual company program competition. That's all I have for you guys.
If you have any questions for our Student Council Board. So Lamaja, would you remind us, what is your grade and position in Student Council?
I am a senior in the 12th grade, and I am the secretary for students.
Well, great job tonight. Don't let that senioritis get to you. We look forward to seeing you at graduation.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Okay, three point two, asset lifecycle analysis report. Mr. Carl Starr. Welcome, Mr. Starr. Good evening.
So my, my Ted's theme is brief. A couple things we're going to talk about. First, the product of our primary is the facility assessment evaluation. So in January of 2024, the state released Senate Substitute One for Senate Bill 70. Through this bill, a facility assessment tool evaluation was created with the intent to help school districts review and assess their buildings. They stand on its way. A settlement was created to help identify areas in need of attention to keep facilities clean, safe, and functional for students. In this bill, all school districts are required to have a facility assessment tool and a maintenance and repair plan in all school buildings completed and delivered through the May first issue. You have a faculty to walk yourself. So I don't know how well you can ask. I think you guys have a paper copy of this. But as you look at it, you can see it's very detailed and it's much more probably to break down fully by the way it would be. So it will be available in just as much like your future performance. Also, you should have a paper copy of the maintenance repair plan for 2024, 2025 full year. Also, a larger project that I'll discuss here in a second. You have the okay, so for the summer, the larger project, we got a plan or a little over 79,000 square foot roof replacement. This project will replace the roof and symptoms on the front four hallways. Science, art, home backyard, drive-in, party room, main lobby, and all of it. But at high school, we're also replacing six of the rooftop units that were originally installed in 1996. And we are replacing the final set of speed bathrooms and bathroom district vision center. At Chipmunks, gymnasium, locker rooms, and Chipmunks long in doing HVAC system. And we are upgrading the building on basis system at Northeast Elementary with new software for the HVAC system. This controls the schedules for heating, cooling, space temperature throughout the buildings. North Elementary will have a new install, students drop off a new cord installed in two second classes at Thorpe End and Chipmunks. At Central last year, we can paint the main hallway of office to match the colors. Continue to suffer with the eastward demand of all the locks. And then we'll be resurfacing the big old lines and everything in the high school. So next, moving on, the board is asked to do the facilities effort for buildings and a preventive maintenance plan for the 2024, 2025 full year. And then we need to have an informal approval at the weight movement.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Starr. Question, this discussion for Mr. Starr and report. So just one question for your list of summer agents. So I know we're still dealing, have been dealing with supply chain issues, specifically HVAC related. And the Chipmunk Gym project, I think, got pushed off, delayed a little bit because of that. Is the summer?
This is the summer.
This is the summer.
Now, there is a UTR being sold here as well, but it's still over your mind. It's lagging. Maybe going still back in your mind.
Okay, great. Well, thanks. Thanks again. I know this this reporting structure and schedule was new and was dropped on us and a surprise. So I know it's taken a lot of time and effort, but thanks to you and your team and everyone that's involved to get it ready. And we will review between now and the eighteen, the countless pages that we have. And we'll let you know if any questions. Sounds good. Thank you. All right, three point three, superintendent report, Dr. Lucas.
Good evening, everybody. I'll try to be brief because I've had a report and we have a lot of reports tonight in fact. I did want to bring attention to Lamaja's report, the paid internship being the first time they've done that. As well as the real world, world work experiences that are going on in our hospitality department. They have really stepped it up over at the high school, getting students, not only these industry-recognized certifications. I mean, they're, they're just knocking it out of the park over there. Sarah Potter from the CIA Department, working with Mrs. Stuperson, her team. So kids are getting some really hands-on, real-world stuff, but it's really exciting to know what they're, what they're doing over there. A lot of other things to celebrate, obviously, Coach Romly and the cheer squad. Congratulations. A lot of athletes had great winter seasons. We're going to be recognizing that. A few more of them next month. We've also announced our Teachers of the Year for the different buildings. So just real quickly, Mrs. Wendy Russ from the high school, Mr. Brent Carter from Chipmunk, Mrs. Amy Yanishek from Central, Mrs. Carol Warren from East, Mrs. Jennifer Louder from North, and Mrs. Brittany Campbell from South. Congratulations to those well-deserving teachers who are, they're School Teachers of the Year and good luck at the district level. I'd also like to congratulate Mrs. Campbell again from South for being named the state finalist for the 2024 Presidential Award for Math and Science Teaching. So she was one of only four finalists from Delaware, and she'll be competing at the national level for national award. Finally, congratulations to Mrs. Carla Jester, who's been named Lake Forest Behavior Health Professional of the Year. She floats between Central and East. Like always, I like to shout out a few calendar reminders. Next week, most of our schools will be closed for spring break. Principals and staff can be available by appointment, so please reach out directly to them for assistance. Of course, the central business office will be open for business, so if there's anything we can do, please just give us a ring or stop by. We'll be back in business April 8th, and then it's a virtual free fall to the end of the year. So please keep an eye on the 12-month calendar on our website for all the exciting spring events, which are going to be many and they're going to be excellent and awesome. So please take a look and come out for one of the many great events. That's all I have. Thank you. You'll go back to President Dempsey for any questions or discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Lucas. Questions or discussion for Dr. Lucas's superintendent report? All right. Three point four, we are back to you, sir, strategic planner.
So this is another exciting event that I get to host here, and it's giving you an update on our strategic plan. We do this twice a year and just to keep the board and the community aware of all of the great things that are going on since the implementation of the existing strategic plan, as well as some future things that we have scheduled to keep moving towards that ultimate goal of really making Lake Forest your best choice. So just as a reminder, our district vision is new to model excellence in education. This year, we've really been emphasizing implementing necessary changes to increase student learning. That's been the focus of the administration is what are some positive things that we can do at buildings and departments to directly affect student learning in the district? Just as a review, these tiles represent some of the things that we've implemented since the adoption of this strategic plan. The curriculum has been a big emphasis. We're fully now immersed in new curriculum and catified in math and ELA. There's been a real focus on the science reading, thanks to the CIA Department. They're really looking at, you know, literacy as a focus of effort. Our teacher writing committee will be very familiar with some of the things that they're doing. A lot of technology upgrades, thanks to Mr. Lovin and his team. So again, I'm not going to read every one of those things, but a lot of really positive initiatives that have been taken on in priority area one, which is academic success understood. Priority area two, our partnership with families, communities, and businesses. Of course, you know, our communication, universal communication tools adopted by our teacher writing committee. We feel like that's been a big, a big add, narrowing down communication in one map. I think it's been a big, a big goal. We've regionalized our multi-language learners to East Elementary School for native reading, and so far, so good there. Number of other things participating, state, local, career fairs, that have helped to establish small partnerships with the community. So a lot of good things going on in priority area two. Priority area three. Let's see. Again, this is our focus on culture, climate, facilities. We've had a good taste of some of the things, the improvements we've made, facilities, ventilation, roofing. We've made a sizable investment in technology, and it's camera upgrades, just, just, the list goes on and on. So thanks to all of you that have been involved in really upgrading our posture in terms of facilities here in the district. So I'm going to turn it over to our committee chairs, Mr. Dee and Mrs. Tomaties for priority area one, academic success. And I'll give you a little bit closer than a 10,000 focal view that I gave. So, Mr. Dee.
All right, perfect. So again, it's priority area one, and we have, I can see three things there. All students possessing the necessary literacy and mathematical skills across all content areas. We do that by providing our recycle, all the differentiated instruction, line of standards. Really going continuously tracking data that measures the academic success of all students. We rely on that and driven instruction to figure growth and keeping up with the technology support there. So so some of these high-level metrics here, kind of going back to last board meeting when we went through the whole CIA update, all the action steps going through. So this is much more high-level where here's the data coming off all those action steps that managed at the previous board meeting. So you can see so far through two part periods what our grade distributions look like. And all this data, we'll show it again, Dr. Lucas and Mrs. Tomaties. The Lake Forest Report Card website, you can go and just breaks down my school too. So this is just kind of a district overview here. Paid upon 53% of all grades from now to age, not going to read that going through, but you can see what the grade distribution there is through two market periods. And then at our secondary level, six to 12 going through. And then one that I want to pay close attention to is number two failing to our more classes. You can see 14 kids in grades K to five. You see a little bit larger number there in the secondary schools. The reason we track this, one, these are the kids very much in danger of failing to grade level. So we want to get to them as quickly as we can to track this throughout the year. We don't want surprises at the end of the year. Oh, look at this, Donnie, not going to make it, right? We want to intervene as quick as possible. And kudos to the Chipmunk and the high school. As we track this, instead of waiting for the summer to run credit recovery, we try to start running these credit recoveries as quick as humanly possible to get these kids back on track. I've talked about Star and ELA and math data. Star is the benchmark assessment we take. Every kid takes that in the fall, winter, and spring. We use that data to identify students that are at risk in ELA and math. And to start to identify them, possibly provide them more interventions outside of what we call tier one, which is regular classroom instructor. Right? We talked about opportunity funding before, how we staff all these interventionists in the school. This is some of the data that goes to tell us what we need together, or the school we need together as an instructional support team. Hey, this kid needs help. This group of kids is doing just fine. So what this slide represents is from the fall to the winter on these benchmark tests, you can see K to five ELA, and I'll also, a visual, another visual here in a second. We have 8% more kids scoring proficient in the winter than we did in the fall. So these twelve ELA went up one, K to five math, 6%, 6 to 12, 2% base numbers. Are right around the ballpark of what we see on a year-to-year basis at this point in time. We normally see more growth when it comes in the fall, the spring, it starts to see, I feel normally see some nominal growth from that fall to, I don't know. So this is the visual I'm talking about. These are like math examples. So I should get older. For example, in the math example, 52.9% of kids in this example are proficient, they're doing well with tier one instruction. Doing well in the classroom. You see 15% of kids are kind of on, or 15 kids who steeped 14.4% or kind of in that morning area. You might have to, what we call tier these kids out, start providing interventions. And then we have at that top, this was the fall, the initial benchmark back to school, right away get them, you can see like 30.8. So what we want to see is growth over time, right? That our tier one instructions is working, that our interventions are working. So if you go to that second pyramid on the map, you can see 71.2% of kids have gone into the green on this example. You've got 13.5% under the yellow and 14.4, which is showing wonderful growth, right? What is happening is this kid toward yellow in the fall, a lot of them are pushing to the green. And then the reds that were in the fall has shrunk down, and that's pushed into the yellows. Looks like the yellow is stabilized at like 14.4, 13.5. There's actually a movement happening there going through. That's why our instructional support teams meet every nine weeks to bring up kid by kid. These kids are yellow or red, and really talk about what's happening in the classroom, the support. The last slide I think we have here is state testing proficiency. You can see over the years. 2019, right, right before we're going into COVID, you have the number 63, 53, we talked about this last year, right, and the COVID effect that it had across the state, across the country. 2020, there was no state testing. 2021, it was not everyone was state tested. But Lake Forest had one of the higher turnouts, lack of better work for state testing. And then you can see pulling out of there. So once again, showing pretty good growth going across the board. We, I mentioned that last week, we're one of the few districts, if not the only district, that are pretty much growing in every category, every grade level, ELA and math. As we saw by our visit by Governor and Secretary May. So that is a high-level overview there for priority area one.
Thank you, Mr. Dee. Any questions for Mr. Dee, priority one? Mr. Warren is our chair for priority area two. So, Mr. Warren.
Thank you, Dr. Lucas. Priority, priority area two focuses on our partnerships. So in these next three slides, or three or four slides, you'll see a list of organizations and community members, as well as specific events that schools have been connecting with and running in order to strengthen these partnerships and these connections throughout the entire Lake Forest community. The first area that we focus on is looking at establishing events and opportunities that are within interests of our students and our community members. So as you can see, this is where we highlighted all of a variety of events and things that schools have done to help engage family members. Things such as art and literacy nights. There's a variety of those that take place across different schools. We have had STEM nights at some of our secondary schools. Our schools also offer career day opportunities where organizations come in and share with students experiences in different areas of careers, moving outside of graduation. Then we have a lot of events that just are there for student engagement, create opportunities to have some fun. Like the Fall Ball, Dancing with the Stars was an event that took place at Central. All the winter concerts that were performing arts productions from the high school. South also had a safety patrol induction ceremony as a district. High school hosted our Black History Celebration. So this is a small sample of some of the, some of the events that we have ran in the district to engage those interests throughout the community. So this is a small sample of some of the, some of the events that we have ran in the district to engage those interests throughout the community. Our next slide here talks a little bit about relationships and building those relationships across all organizations. So as you can see, one of our, our stronger ones is our parent advisory council, an opportunity to connect and give our parents a voice, provide them some insight and transparency on what's going on across our district. Our Lake Forest Community Education Foundation is a very strong partner. You know, we had just a couple of meetings ago, they announced all of the scholarships for the current school year, contributions they make to that. Also things and connections with the parent teacher organizations, blood drives through the Blood Blanket Delaware. We have partnerships with high school student mentors traveling across the district and working with students in elementary schools. We also have this very strong FFA alumni chapter. Chick-fil-A helps to sponsor some of our junior achievement initiatives, our high school booster organizations. So we have a very broad level of experiences that we connect with our community members to establish those relationships. As we know, they are all considered school stakeholders as well as we're building our next generation of community supporters. The final slide is to just briefly highlight some of the great things that are happening at the high school work-based learning. Dr. Lucas did mention this a little bit earlier tonight. We've seen continuous increases in enrollment of our students in these opportunities. So here's some, just some real brief data to indicate how those changes continue to take place throughout the year. And then the final slide is just a list of some of the organizations that we have partnered with, where our students are going either getting ten, internships, actually have paid work-based learning opportunities or just working on building career-based skills through some of these organizations. So you see, we even reach outside of our district into Camden. We also reach out to, I believe, Chick-fil-A and Milford and Brado's and Milford plays a big part in this as well. We even have some of our local organizations such as Becker Morgan, EnviroCore Labs, Beginnings and Beyond. So we have some great connections with our organizations as we continue to build our work-based learning programs at Lake Forest High School.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Warren for area two? And I think Mr. Sheehan, you need to take on priority area three?
Yep, absolutely. So priority area three, we look at facilities, we look at school climate and culture. And part of facilities is also technology. As Mr. Star presented, we have a large group of projects upcoming. Those are not on this slide. This is an update of the projects that we had previously. If you look at that right-hand column, you can see that a majority of them are free at this point, minus the E P A C here that will be happening as Star reported this summer. So as we move into our next set of dates, I'd imagine we would add those few facility improvements and upgrades to this list and to be reporting out on those. For technology, I have to report the same, the same type of outcome. We have three projects that we're working on. First one essentially the large portion would be a whole lot of Chromebooks. We are entirely a one-to-one district. We also had some server updates that took place in the fall of this school year with two outdated servers that were replaced. And then some additional will be replaced this summer. And then we're seeking proposals for digital phone systems, creative systems out within our schools. Our second piece there revolves around the idea of just replacing outdated technology. So we are on a five-year cycle with a portion of that including an update to Windows eleven taking place this summer for staff devices. Their staff will actually, for a majority of returning to their device, device is ten months there for that updated for the summer. And then we also have a update coming for some of our schools to upgrade the, essentially just the wiring from a CAT five to a CAT six. This, I believe this summer as well as next summer for some of our schools, including the high school, Chipman and East. And then our third one, I was kind of talked about some of the communication pieces that were part of a different strategic area, including just the standard, standardization of our website, world there and the addition of remind as our universal communication system for, for parents and families. Part of the strategic area three is also climate and culture, which includes attendance data. So the matrix that we use for attendance data is chronically absent, which is a very difficult metric. Because at this point in the year, you're working at eight absences, whether they are excused or unexcused to identify you as being chronically absent. So you imagine if you have a cooler code, there's three or four days that are excused, but you know, puts them in bed standing for this, this metric. So right now, and I can report happily that these are much improved numbers from this time last year, K to five. The percentage of chronically absent students is nine point seven percent and six to twelve, twenty-one point one percent. The numbers from last year at this time, K to five was twenty-four point nine percent. So that is a huge improvement there. And then the six twelve number was thirty-three point six percent. So I know it is a, you know, not necessarily a favorable metrics that we use because it separates or it includes excuse and unexcuse. We are seeing tremendous improvement there from this time last year. All right, this one's a little bit of a moving target. Last year, this time we reported out choice. This time we signed out, we were actually reporting out choice as well as charter school and Mo Tech. So the numbers are a little bit different, but you know, I mean, you can't really see them. That total piece down at the bottom is really the big number that we will look at, the number of students that are choosing in for school district versus the number of students that are choosing out. So really that number on the bottom right-hand corner is a plus eighteen. This time last year, we were looking at about a plus seventeen. So we're right on par. Those numbers aren't different in terms of the amounts of students choosing in and choosing out. But if you, you factor out those numbers, essentially the difference, we're in a very considerable place when it comes to that point this time last year. And then Travis, our next slide is around the charter and VOTAC, which we did not report this out last year, but we inevitably used the benchmark and continue to report this information out as we provide updates. But this allocates the number of students in each of the charter schools, including Academy Dover Campus. Most polytech, the various effects that our schools, our students go to, resulting in a total number of three hundred and forty-eight students attending those programs. And our final piece is this one data, very similar to the way Mr. Vic described this pyramid pieces with the red, yellow, green. That's how we look at these as well. So this time of year, we have ninety-seven point one percent of our K five students are in that green portion of the pyramid, which you, as I mentioned, is favorable. Two point three percent of students are in the yellow, which is students with two to five referrals at this point in the school year. And then for the red, shiny tip at the top of the pyramid, point zero six percent for this time of the year for K five. And then comparatively for six twelve, our green is eighty-nine point eight percent. Our yellow was eighty point two percent and our red, students with six or more referrals is near two percent. And, and, and as it goes along with academics as well as the behavior side, when you look at these, these triangles, a balanced triangle is considered eight, five, ten and fifteen. So we are well within those operating parameters.
Eight, five, ten and five?
Oh, I'm sorry. Eight, eight, five, ten and five. Yeah, that's right. I was adding the numbers. I had eight, five, ten and five to equal one hundred percent. I think that is, I think that's all I have for, if I have any questions.
Okay, I'm going to wrap it up here. As you remember, you probably recall, we were, we've been working really hard in our outward facing document, which is our comprehensive discipline data point. Mr. Warren, you have the next one? And then can you, so this is what it looks like on our website. Open it up now. Thanks to Mrs. Tompkins. Anything you want to know about our data in the district by school, it's very user-friendly. Click on, for example, was that attendance data? Sorry, let's see where here. So there's our, that's Lake Forest East, currently absent attendance, not currently absent. And, and again, try maybe a little bit other categories. So I encourage anybody listening, jump on there, take a look. Lot of really good up-to-date information regarding district performance, everything from culture, climate, student performance, test scores, grade distribution. It's all available right now and up to date. So thank you, Mrs. Tompkins, for that. And then the last thing I want to talk about was some of the things that we've got in the works. And what's, what's we have to look forward to? First, our parent resource centers. PAC has been working really hard on parent resource centers. It's in our strategic plan that each school should have a parent resource center where parents could come, learn how to computer, they can get on a laptop, they can get on hack and we can give them resources and they need community support in some ways. So we're working on that. Facility improvements here at Chipman, we actually had someone come out here and give us a walk through about expanding this cafeteria. I don't know if you've ever been here, but put three hundred eighth graders in this place and you cannot breathe, is they are that tight. So we really have to expand this size of this cafeteria. So that is something that we're hoping to, to move on here in the near future. The state is transitioning off of East School to Infinite Campus. So that is going to be a heavy lift. To get the report on how that goes. And that's something we're really excited about. Next year, the whole administrative team is going to be working, is going to be focused on bringing. How can we really get that Spartan brand out there and, and more importantly, Spartans for life? So one of the things that some people much smarter than me came up with is these, are these wonderful layettes that we're going to start getting out to all the newborns in the district. We've got some really nice little items in here. We've got a little teeter here. They're going to get a Good Night Delaware book. And I'm really excited about these. That's his little, little Spartan for life onesies. And then, where are these from?
TV.
Yes. So those little blankets here, little baby goat. So, so we're hoping we're going to start off with each newborn child in the staff will get one. And then eventually we really like to focus on every newborn in the district that's Spartan for Life legat. Welcome to the district and, you know, set the tone that when you're born in our district, you will be here to graduate. You know, they do. They'd have to get a bigger one for the release. And, and that's all I have. If there are anything I can answer, any questions I can ask from the discussion, love to, love to entertain that right now.
Thank you, Dr. Lucas. Questions, discussion, reward, Mrs. McFossett?
Good question. I love, you know, we talked about that, if parents can get on and look at the discipline and things like that. I'm really excited to get it. I do have a question about attendance though, because that chronic looks really bad. So is there a way that we can decide where to at least put on excuse absence on there and excuse, just so that people don't think that we literally have twenty percent of our kids chronically just not coming to the school? Just because I think it, it doesn't really read correctly, not long ago. But it doesn't read what, what you would think of chronic absence problem when it may be, like you said, excuse absence, doctor's appointments, things like that where.
Okay, yep, we can, we can think about changing that graph.
Yeah, give it another color in there.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody, anything else from the board? So I will say, Dr. Lucas, in the administration, everybody involved, thank you very much for that report. But more so for all of the hard work that's going on behind this. Thank you much. We're up to three point five L F P A report. This is Anita Bullishead. Welcome, Miss Bullishead.
Thank you. So first of all, I want to say thank you. And it's going to be, it's a busy time of year. Everything is happening. Spring break is here. People are excited to just get away and have a break. But it means that there's a ton of activities made, that a ton of activities. One of the things with L F P A we want to do is to support our students and give back. Just like the, everybody's trying to support teachers, we are trying to support back the kids. So we are looking to give free, if it depends on if we can raise money for five hundred dollar scholarships for current seniors at Lake Forest High School this year. Currently, we've raised about three hundred and twenty-five dollars through our social. So we're putting a lot of initiatives and a lot of things in. So the very first thing I have is our wonderful pie in the face contest. Every administrator in the district has their pie in the face for the bucket. So all the, all the schools have every administrator and Dr. Lucas. Again, whoever gets the most in their jar will get the pie in the face. Whoever gets the least will get the furthest pie and it will happen at twelve o'clock at Lake Forest Day. So obviously I have the very first person now, because if I switch it, then nobody will put any money in. So the very, obviously I just have a bucket with Dr. Lucas in there. The other thing I have is our basket raffle. And Mr. Dempsey is great at winning on our basket raffle every single year. We weren't able to do it last year, but we are doing it this year. We have one ticket, I'm sorry. Five dollars for a ticket and then for twenty dollars for five tickets. I do have tickets with me tonight. If you are interested, please leave me before you leave. And then the third thing we have is we are going to do a dollar for a ticket starting May first to May seventeenth. You get a ticket for a dollar for a chance of a ten dollar gift card. So we're really trying to push it up and try to get this money for our seniors and to kind of help them in first what we need them to do. You know, it's a sad, sad situation that a lot of people are in. Everybody's tapped out. So we're trying to make it a little bit fun, have them enjoy the time. We've got, I love the forest day coming up where we've got the bounty houses and different activities. And our teachers just, we're going to keep going, want to keep that positive vibe going. Like I said, this is the busy time, everybody is just feeling it. Before you know it, it'll be graduation and we're standing on stage watching these kids walk across and graduate. So. End of the marketing period is here. We've done grades. We're in the fourth marketing period. We're in the home stretch. They kept saying it's coming up, so everybody is feeling it, but we're looking forward to the end of the year. Any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Bullishead. Any questions, discussion for Mrs. Bullishead and L F P A?
Can we take a stop?
Well, thank you very much. And thank you, Mrs. Heather Hitchens, for being here as well. Appreciate all you guys do. Wishing you and all the staff a very safe, happy Easter break. Going to section four, unfinished business, four point one, Mr. Ratt. I made the motion to make a true resolution, four point one, board policy, second readings, as modified within this guy.
Second?
Emotional flow properly seconded. We'll open it up for discussion as typical. Briefly go through each of these. Just a reminder, these are second readings. These didn't come to the board approximately a month ago. So this will be our final reading. We'll start with C H C A handbooks and directives, a discussion on C H C A. So you know, we want to G B E B D staff conduct dash social media in discussion on this policy. So you know, we want to G C E C, posting and advertising vacancies, in discussion on this policy. Seeing none, we want to G C K, certified staff assignments and transfers, discussion on G C K. So you know, we want to G C M C, parent conferences, staff meetings, staff meetings and school meetings, any discussion on this policy. Here we go, we're going to G C Q, certified staff termination of employment, discussion on G C Q. So you know, move on to G C Q A, certified staff reduction in force, discussion on this policy. I just have one minor thing in the second paragraph, second line after the fourth word, it looks like we were removing a semicolon. I think we do need a comma there because it sets off that statement reads differently with and without. Okay, that was it. Anything further? So you know, G C Q C, resignation of certified staff, discussion on this policy. So you know, we want the G C Q D, resignation of administrative staff, in discussion on this policy. When we want to G C Q H, discipline suspension and dismissal of administrative staff, discussion on this policy. Seeing none, we want the G, G C R, non-school employment of certified staff, discussion on G C R. Seeing none, move on to I J O A, field trips, a discussion on field trips. Seeing none, go to our last policy, K I, visitors to schools, discussion on K I. Great, seeing none. Any further comments on any of these policies? All right, we do have a motion on the floor properly.
All right, we do have a motion on the floor properly seconded. We shall move to a vote. All those in favor, aye, aye. Any opposed? The extensions. Motion carries five to zero. Section nine, personnel retirements, make a motion with proof resolution, line point one, as written.
Second.
Emotional floor properly seconded. Questions or discussion on the motion? Bless you. Seeing none, move to a vote. All those in favor, aye, aye. Any opposed? Extensions, motion carries five to zero. Section eleven, personnel transfers and making motion to improve resolutions, eleven point one and eleven point two, as written.
Second.
Emotional floor properly seconded. Questions or discussion on the motion? Here you know, move to a vote. All those in favor, aye, aye. Any opposed? The extensions, motion carries five to zero. Section thirteen, personnel offers of deployment and make a motion for resolution, thirteen point one and thirteen point nine, as written.
Second.
Emotional floor properly seconded. Questions or discussion on the motion? Here you know, move to a vote. All those in favor, aye, aye. Any opposed? The extensions, motion carries five to zero. Section fifteen, personnel leaves of absence and make a motion to improve resolutions, fifteen point one and fifteen point six, as written.
Second.
Emotional floor properly seconded. Questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, move to a vote. All those in favor, aye, aye. Any opposed? The extensions, motion carries five to zero. Staying in section fifteen, personnel leaves of absence and make a motion to improve resolutions, fifteen point seven and fifteen point eight, as written.
Second.
Emotional floor properly seconded. Questions or discussion on the motion? Seeing none, move to a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed?
Aye.
Nay. Any extensions? Motion fails zero to five. Section nineteen, personnel appointment to make a motion here to improve resolutions, nineteen point one and nineteen point two, as written.
Second.
Emotional floor properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, move to a vote. All those in favor, aye, aye. Any opposed? The extensions, motion carries five to zero. And finally, section twenty-two, other business field trips and make a motion to improve resolution, point one, high school field trips, as I think that's available.
Second.
Emotional floor properly seconded. Questions or discussion on the motion? So I will pause just for a second in case anyone hasn't had an opportunity to review if this one was added uh late. Um, it was provided to district office a little late. Um, but it is an out of state field trip that needs to be acted upon quickly so that students can attend. So we have not, little data can take a moment just to review. Now, do we have any discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none, move to a vote. All those in favor, aye, aye. Any opposed? The extensions, motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Mr. Rapp. Thank you, Mrs. Stark. We're up to section thirty-four, board report, discussion items, twenty-four point one. Go to the order, opportunity for board members to uh address any topics not covered elsewhere on the agenda. Board members, the floor is open. All right, as I do at each time, each meeting this time of year, do want to remind everyone about school board elections. School board elections are coming up. The filing deadline was the first Friday of March or March first. We had two candidates file for our one seat that is open for election. Uh, reading off from the Department of Elections website and where they are listed, we have uh David Walter Mazer of Frederica and Sarah R. Starkey of Felton. Uh, these are our two candidates that we will be voting on during the election that's held the second Tuesday of May. This year will be Tuesday, May fourteen. I got it right this time. Um, and polling places uh that day will be open from seven AM to eight PM. We'll have four polling places in the district. Those will be the Frederico Firehouse in Frederico, Lake Forest North Elementary School in Felton, Lake Forest South Elementary School in Harrington and also Lake Forest High School outside of Felton. Please come out and vote. That is all I have. Does anyone have anything else? All right, that said, we'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Uh, timeout, sorry. Executive session, not aware of a need for executive session. Dr. Lucas, Mr. Norman, any board member? With that said, Mr. Rapp, entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion from the floor properly seconded for adjournment. Do you want to mention April, our April meeting? So the April uh meeting, we will be a little off the schedule. We're usually the second and fourth Thursday. However, in April, we're combining into one meeting and it will be the third Thursday. And that is April eighteenth, we will be back at the district office. Uh, the last thing I'd say before adjourn, adjourn is just wishing all of our students, our staff, our community a very happy and safe Easter and a great, great spring break. See you all on the other side. I thought with that, all those in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Aye. Any vote? Extensions, motion carries five to zero. Thank you all. Stay safe.